What is one thing you can do to kind of make your neighborhood, make your community, make your city a better place? Joining the debate club, actually, I would say raised my GPA almost a full point because I ask people to imagine what they want their city to be in 20 years. The housing crisis was so bad, we had some students that were like renting garages to live in.
Don't get what they want, they won't, they're not willing to work, they're not willing to be able to take that extra mile.
Without having to own a car, that's $15,000 a year in your pocket. How do you make friends or how do you, because I think that that sense of that social connection is the is the foundation of safety, right? How many people feel unsafe because all they're doing is looking at their phone on the train or looking at their phone on the bus?
A lot more initiative, a lot more control when it comes to the city.
Fewer and fewer students are are engaged in alcohol culture. The more we can get people onto the bus, the more people we can get people into bike lanes, the more people we can get walking. Who wins? Drivers. Even if you get 10% of them out to vote, that's enough to swing an election. And the housing to the transportation to the festivals, all comes from the city taxpayer.
Hello, you beautiful people. Welcome back to the long term podcast. I'm your host, Aden Villa, and today we have a guest that is a progressive politician and current Edmonton City Councilor for the White Ave, University of Alberta and Southgate area. Elected in 2021, Michael is well known for his strong advocacy on student issues, public education, community housing, and progressive city policies, often aligning with and receiving support from members of the New Democratic Party, Michael Johns, everyone. We will discuss philosophy, public service, municipal elections, housing and affordability, loving your city, transit, parks and student life. Michael is a phenomenal leader and ever since he's been a student at the U of A, he's just signed up for all these different clubs and wanting to be involved. And now decades later, he's still wanting to make the community and make the lives better for the people around him. I think if you're a person that wants to take part and wants to be informed of what's going on in Edmonton, and especially if you're a student, what you can do is vote for the next upcoming election. And yeah, Michael is a phenomenal person and I believe he has changed many lives of people directly and indirectly. And I hope you guys derive a lot of great value from this episode today. Everybody, welcome. Michael Johns, everyone. Yeah, so today we are here with Michael Johns, everyone. And so you've spent over almost two decades in public service, from the U of A Students Union President to elected school trustee to now a city councillor. What core philosophy has guided your decisions throughout your career?
I've always been, going back to the Student Union, I've always been interested in politics as a way to make your community better. I remember I was living in Lister Hall at the U of A, the student residence, and at the time, the meal plan, the air mark was, they were looking at raising the prices on the meal plan, but weren't going to give us any any better food. They were looking at raising the rent and at the at the residence and and I got involved in student government and student advocacy as a way to try and like stand up for my peers and make the community better. And same thing after I after I graduated university, I got involved in public education advocacy, that was my 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 background and got got involved in in municipal politics and provincial politics, always as a way around, what is one thing you can do to kind of make your neighborhood, make your community, make your city a better place? And that's always been excited and always been exciting and my my advice always when I give talks to student leaders is just keep volunteering, put your hand up, stand up, get involved, it's you never know where it'll take you.
Yeah, and for students who are lost, how how do they know where to start? Because it can be daunting, right? Because there's all these different clubs, there's all these different opportunities. Plus they're studying and then you gotta, if you if you live alone, you gotta cook for yourself and you gotta stay healthy too. You gotta hit the gym, you gotta make sure you're maintaining friendships. Where do you start with all this?
Totally. I so I remember like I I finished high school in 2002, night of year off. And during that year off, I traveled and I ended up working at this this steel factory in Calgary and it was a terrible job and I was bored and lonely and then I came up to the U of A. And I remember the first clubs fair I went to in 2003 and I signed up for everything, literally everything. I joined the debate club, I joined the Model UN Club, I joined Ultimate Frisbee Club, I joined the Scuba Club, I I joined everything because I was just so desperate to make friends and make connection and get involved. And still to this day in my U Alberta, I had some, I was still on the, I was still on the ultimate frisbee list, you know, 15 years later. But but it was just a way of, I just said yes to stuff, I showed up and I I got to meet friends, go to conferences, improve my grades. I actually found it was a contradiction. The more things I did, the better my GPA was. Joining the debate club, actually, I would say raised my GPA almost a full point because it forced you to focus, it also forced you to refine your game and you were also getting to hang out with these other super smart, hyper performing people. When I joined Student Union and I joined, when I ended up becoming SU president, I actually found the more I did, the better I got. It was, it seems contradictory, right? So it's, I would say like, just lean into everything like that sponge, just squeeze every drop of water out of your campus experience. It's it's such a short time in the big picture and as much as it's stressful in the moment, you'll learn so much from it. The friends you'll have will be there for the rest of your life. Still to this day, I've got friends now that I'm a city councillor, still helping my council campaigns and other other campaigns and I met them in student politics. So first step is just showing up, right?
Yeah, you planted the seeds by being involved, right? And now decades later, you maintain those friends and the the beautiful part about being a part of all those clubs is the people that are more likely to show up to those clubs while maintaining a high GPA, they're usually the ones that are in a good position later on. So you're, not only are you setting yourself up later on, but you're also surrounding yourself with people that are high performers that think the same as you, if not better. And like they make sure they they got their schedule dialed in, they got their hours down to the schedule, down to the the second. And you you just get to see what people are truly capable of.
Totally, yeah. So I was living in Lister Hall in 2003 and some of the senior students came and knocked on my door and said, hey, Michael, we're looking at starting a dodgeball league. And for your listeners who may not know, it's a student residence, but it has a gymnasium. And we said, dodgeball, that sounds amazing, let's do it. And that was the pilot, that was like the pilot season of the Lister Dodgeball League. And it was so much fun and we had, we had 1,800 students coming out every week, playing dodgeball together. It was great, it was silly, it was ridiculous, but but it was so awesome that the next year, we decided, yes, we're going to make it permanent and I was one of the vice presidents of the Dodgeball League. Kind of I I took on an administrative role as the rules administrator, helping get everything set up and organized and and running. And it was the same thing, it was somebody had an idea, found a group of friends, took a little bit of money and turned it into something that's still to this day is flourishing. And I got to take my own cut, my own kid, my own seven, seven year old with the mayor of Edmonton and we went to, we dropped, we did a surprise visit to Lister Dodgeball on Sunday night, we coordinated it with the the student leaders and said, hey, we're going to bring the mayor. So like pack the gym and so there we are, all these students at Lister, the mayor came in, my seven year old came in, I was there. We all put on our shirts and we went to play and getting to like see something that I was involved in 20 years later, still still flourishing and still going awesome. And the level of even the players, like watching the level of game that's improved, the new rules changes. It's it's just, it's super, it's super, super cool. And yeah, so my advice, whenever I whenever I talk to students is just like volunteer, you never know, you never know where it's going to take you, but get involved.
Yeah, and what was that feeling like being decades later and just being a part of that?
Oh, so proud, so proud, especially seeing my own son playing on the court too. That was, that was, they were super nice to him, like the 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 big kids could have just like dinged him, you know, but they didn't. And and he and I had a bit of a duel and he got me out and was super proud. So yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, and you were a part of all these clubs and still are to this day, being a part of the community and putting yourself out there. Like, how do you go about not feeling burnt out or like even the kind of the, I know with my generation, we experience a lot of anxiety, right? And putting ourselves out there ain't so easy, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I think we 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 experiencing, my generation experiences anxiety too, we just didn't have the words for it. We just, you know, drank a lot more because we were socially awkward, but we didn't have the words for it. We had other habits that were, that whether it was, whatever, whatever it was, we had different habits to mask our own anxiety or our own coping mechanisms, we just didn't have the language for mental health, the way we do now. It was like depression or that's it, you know what I mean? It was like, and now we have a lot more. So I I found the the greatest antidote to apathy, the greatest antidote to anxiety was just getting involved, finding something that you think is broken or could be better or could be improved and getting involved in in that, whether it's, as a city councillor, I helped, I was frustrated that we had, we have a a union for the transit drivers and we have a strong advocacy in other areas, but we didn't have anything for transit riders. And I found this group in Vancouver called Movement, it's kind of like a union for for transit riders. And and so I brought the organizer from Movement to Edmonton and said, what would it look like if we could build a an organization, an advocacy group for people who use public transit? Because we need somebody to stand up for our bus, like our our bus, our transit, our our voice as riders. Why is it, you know, drive, drivers have a lot of people advocating for them, car companies, road companies, other companies, but who is standing up for the people riding the bus every day? So we brought this organizer in named Dennis from from Movement Vancouver and we kind of created our own Edmonton group called the Edmonton Transit Riders. So I was, I was happy to kind of bring all those folks together and so if you care about improving public transit in Edmonton, you can join the Edmonton Transit Riders, they talk about making transit safer, more more fast, more frequent, improving the experience, you know, whether it's wifi or better shelters or whatever it is. There's now a way for you to take your frustration waiting at the bus stop and turn it into action.
Yeah, you take what's applicable to your own life and you go, huh, how can I improve this? And you find that there's doors that open up because if you're, like, let's say you're, you truly don't have any hobbies. Like granted, that's not true for most people, but let's say you actually just don't have any hobbies, all you do is study and that's it. But how are you getting to your study places, right? Maybe through the bus, maybe you're reading some sort of books, maybe you could join that that area in life, maybe join a book club, right? Or an advocacy for books and for learning. Yeah, it's like, there's always something that aligns with who you are and you can connect with people that way. And it's, it's a beautiful story that you told is just who who speaks for the people riding the the buses, right? The transit system.
Yeah, yeah, and and like we we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a robust kind of renters movement to stand up for renters. We don't have a robust, there's like a group, there's a group in Edmonton who advocates for cyclists, there's a group who advocates for walkability. There's groups that advocate for seniors, but the transit riders piece was missing. So that's something that we've been pushing and we're seeing, we're seeing some growth on because millions of people ride the bus every every year and millions of people take take the LRT every year. How do, how do we make it better? How do we have somebody standing up at budget time saying, don't cut hours of service? In fact, we need to invest more and and especially when you think about many of the people who benefit the most from public transit are students. Many students are what we call captured riders, they aren't riding by choice, they have no other choice. So they're captured, they have to use transit or else it's a really long walk.
Yeah, and with all these kind of issues all around the city, right? There's, well, there's good and I always, I believe that there's majority of good happening in Edmonton, but it's just the negative just overpowers certain goods, right? How do you know where to allocate your time? Because I know you're a busy guy. And how do you know how, but what resources and time to put into certain categories?
Yeah, it's a, that's, and and I think that's, that's the million dollar question and I think it's so much of it is about moments. There's certain moments where, like, we, we have to look and say, okay, this is the priority of this moment, this is what we need to work on. And sometimes that moment is forced upon you. We've had 150,000 people move to Edmonton, 150,000 people in the last three years. That's, that's like one and a half red deers entirely entirely moving to Edmonton. So if we aren't building enough homes for those people, homelessness goes up, rent goes up, scarcity. If we're not making sure that they have transit, they have jobs, they have swimming pools, they have swimming lessons, they have playgrounds for their children, everything else. If we're, if we are not ready, the premier launched this campaign called Alberta's Calling, which is putting ads out in Ontario and everywhere else saying, come to Alberta, come to Alberta. Well, it worked. Everybody came to Alberta and they came to Edmonton. So we in the last four years have had this massive influx of people. And with that comes opportunity and also comes challenges, right?
Yeah, and how do you balance progressive values with practical realities of city governance? Where compromise is often necessary, right? There's what you're gonna put into a certain issue, it's gonna take away from another one.
Yeah, I think I, I think the thing I always go back to is that, you know, I ask people to imagine what they want their city to be in 20 years. Imagine when, you know, you're having children, what kind of, what kind of city do you want your children to grow up in? Do you want the next generation to grow up and do you want more housing choices or less? Do you want a city where you have to own a car or two cars or three cars? Or do you want a city with better public transit? Do you want a city with great parks and green spaces or or do you want something else? These are all the options. I mean, for the last hundred years, we've chosen kind of a more suburban style of building for Edmonton. But in the last 10 to 20 years, we're investing more in LRT, we're investing more in public transit, we're trying to build a city with with more housing choices and more options. So we created the city plan about seven years ago that kind of pushed for more of an urban city, trying to say, okay, as Edmonton grows towards a city of 2 million people, we want more public transit, we want more walkability, we want more bike ability. We want people to be able to do more things more often, closer to home. For me, the 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 primitive city building, if you if you played SimCity or anything else, if you make a more walkable city, that's a more affordable city, that's a nicer city, that's a more pleasant city. And and so me, for me, when it, when it, there's no left or right, there's no conservative or liberal, there's no, like, it's, it goes back to what is the kind of city we're building? And will it maximize quality of life for the most people possible? And that's, that's sort of how I see progressive politics at the city level. It's, it's a, when there's, there's no such thing as 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 private healthcare. If one person gets sick, we all get sick, right? Everything is public, there's no such thing as as kind of a, we're only as strong as our weakest link in our community. If there's, you know, if if rent goes up and somebody becomes homeless, that's our neighbor and they're now, they're now on the street and there, there's all these other challenges that come with it, right? So the more we can do to keep our city affordable and and give people optionality, especially when it comes to housing choices and transportation choices. And this is back in 2007, when I was SU president, the housing crisis was so bad, we had some students that were like renting garages to to live in and and it was, it was really bad. And I don't, I never want that to happen again, so I really want to make sure that we're prioritizing building new homes and building more options for people, especially close to where they want to live. So having a car can become an option, not a necessity, not a requirement, not if you leave, if you can't drive, you're stranded.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I'm a believer of your problems are my problems, your success is my success, right? And when you see a person on the streets, right? Or when they don't have a home, when you, when you hear about a fellow student not having a place to live at, like, who's that going to reflect with, like later on in life, right? Or even now, like as we, as we speak, there's many people, they're suffering out there. And when that's the case, right, where are they supposed to go, right? And when that's the result of crime goes up and certain things of, maybe it's a loved one within the whole family, maybe indirectly, it could affect another family member's mental health because of that, like hearing about it. And just the sight of it is not pretty too, that's a fellow Edmontonian right there.
Totally.
Right? And so we need to be able to make sure that everybody's got their basic necessities.
There's a phenomenal book called The Spirit Level about how more equal sized societies are more happier societies and how like it actually has a heart, when you drive by and you see somebody who's homeless, that actually hurts you. That not just hurts them, it hurts you too. And it talks about that, about everything from, whether we're talking about an outbreak of measles or or gastrointestinal virus or something else, or or whether we're just, we're just talking about a collapsing middle class that doesn't have money to spend on restaurants and 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 entertainment that then hurts the rest of the economy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, because when you see that, right, it's just, I always, I try to be as empathetic as possible. Certain days it's tough, you know, when you're just so caught up in your own problems. But on a good day, when I have more room to be able to share my love with others, I can, I see that person when I'm in downtown or even I'd seen an insured park here and there, which isn't, was, it wasn't common back in the day to. But once a week I'd, I'll see him and it's, it's heartbreaking because this is a person that was, that has a family, right? There, that was a baby one time, that was growing up, maybe they went, we went to the same middle school or something. It's, it's, it's heartbreaking. And yeah, that, that's what, what, what was that book called?
The Spirit Level.
The Spirit Level, I have to, I have to read that.
Everybody is somebody, somebody, everybody, everybody on the street has has a loved one, a a family member somewhere. And I used to work at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, that was my, before being on city council, I was, I worked with them doing youth mentoring programs across Canada. And the one line we always said is, there's no such thing as other people's children. You should love every single child as if they're your own, as if they're your own kin, your own blood, your own, that you're, and and if you have that mindset of saying, you know what, like, even if I don't have children, having a great outdoor swimming pool is good for the whole community, having a great library is good for the whole community, having social work and 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 supports for kids who are in high school, if we can help them finish high school, if we can help them get into the the world of work and opportunity and possibility, that's good for all of us. And we should, we should want that for everything. I think this, this sort of, this pullback, that post pandemic, we've seen kind of this scarcity mentality. Everybody's so worried about themselves, but it's self defeating. It doesn't matter if you have the best fire extinguisher in the world, if you're in a raging forest fire all around you.
Yeah, I like that. A rising tide lifts all boats, right? If you have, it doesn't matter how successful you are. If everybody around you has nothing, then how are people gonna, you know, how are you gonna build community? How are you gonna, but where are you gonna send your kids to school, right? If the teachers don't get paid enough, if the people in the the certain buildings are unhappy with their pay, you know, if the nurses don't get what they want, they won't, they're not willing to work, they're not willing to be able to take that extra mile to do good onto others.
And I think the hard part is, we are seeing, we are seeing, like, it's, I don't think it's left, right, it's top down, bottom up, right? And like, we are seeing, there's the 20 richest Canadians, the McLeans does this, McLeans annually does this magazine called The Wealthiest Canadians, The Richest Canadians. And it lists all of the billionaires in Canada and the top 10 had over $263 million, or sorry, $263 billion. Like that, just for context, the annual budget of Alberta isn't like $50 billion. So there's 10 Canadians who have combined five, six times as much money as the entirety of Alberta. And so it's, it's not saying, you know, it's, it's, it's raising this question of, is this the way we want to build our society? Is this, is this the best outcome for everybody? Is this going to ensure a strong middle class and shared prosperity that will benefit everybody? Is this, you know, it's, it's, it's just shocking and you, we, we see every day what's happening in the United States. And it's like, is that the Canada that we want? Is that the Alberta we want? Is that the Edmonton we want? So it's, you know, I I can't control all of that as a city councillor, to your earlier question. All I can do is say, what's in my control? We need to fight for better transit, let's work on that.
That's true. And then when you tackle this, you kind of build it on. And so one day, once you make sure that your room's clean, clean, you can better clean the kitchen. And when you do that, you take care of your family, you show up for your friends. Once you do that, you do something for the community and it builds up. And eventually, once you kind of get rid of, or you you solve all the kind of certain dilemmas underneath, you make sure you build it up.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting and and, you know, there's certain things cities can do. We can, we can take care of your garbage, we can take care of your parks, we can take care of your, your roads and and your libraries. But there's other things we can't, like the schools are the purview of the province, the healthcare system is the purview of the province. The insurance you pay on your cars, that's regulated by the province. So there's so many ways that we cannot address those things directly. But if we can help a student come to Edmonton and have a a universal transit pass, a U pass, instead of having to pay seven grand a year to insure on to Civic, that's money in your pocket, baby. If we can make sure that you can rent a great place, close to the university, close to McEwen, close to Nate, close to wherever you are, without having to own a car, that's $15,000 a year in your pocket. I was really lucky when I went to the U of A, I could always live around campus. I didn't have to buy a car until I was 26. That's not the case for a lot of people. So how do we make sure that you have more choices, that keeps more money in your pocket, makes your life more affordable?
Yeah, like certain privileges, access to the transit and not having to buy a car, right? Because a car is like, that's like one of the biggest expenses, housing.
Housing and transportation.
Transportation, that's what drains people and puts some, plunges them into debt and makes life, makes the studies just that more miserable.
Yeah, and then you're paying off your debt, you can't buy a house, you're paying off your debt, you can't, you're restricted in where you can work or not. Maybe you can't work in the nonprofit sector because it won't pay enough to pay off your student loans. Everything, everything in life gets worse with less sleep, everything in life gets worse with less housing. You know, the more, if we could just provide abundant housing to everyone and choices, then we have the power, not the landlords. A couple of years ago, I'm a, I'm a renter and and a couple of years ago I was renting and I could, there was a a good vacancy rate. So I could say, okay landlord, landlord A, if you give me this, I'll rent with you, but landlord B is offering me this. So what do you say? I could bargain them off each other, right? You can't do that in some cases. You see in Toronto, there's like a lineup of people to the door and the landlord can just be like, take it or leave it, and the price just went up 100 bucks.
Oh, man.
So it's like, we see everywhere else in Canada, Edmonton has preserved its affordability compared to other cities. Not saying we're great, but compared to the others, because we've kept building a lot of housing, we've kept building. When you look around the U of A, just in the last 10 years, a number of new apartment buildings have gone up. When you look in in other areas of the city, you see that we're taking like old department stores and parking lots and turning them into new apartment buildings. There's, there's things that we are doing as a city since, since 2015, since 2010, where we said, yes, we want to say yes to a lot more housing. And it's worked for us. Other places in Canada have not, they've, they've been more of the the gatekeeper mentality. And now they're paying for it. And who's paying for it? It's, it's the citizens, it's higher, it means higher rents, it means fewer housing choices, it means drive to you qualify. It means having to live a long way away and driving in two hours every day and in Toronto to get to the university. That's, that's not the city I want for my kids, that's not the city I want for you and I.
It means more unhappy people and so when you go to the grocery store, you're just, the chances of a bad interaction is much higher. So everybody gets affected, right?
Man, the road rage, the parking lots, all of it, it's the worst, yeah.
Butterfly effect and, and so you've worked in education, libraries, housing and youth programs. What do these different experiences teach you about building a stronger and more inclusive city?
Yeah, I, I, I think going, we're, we're only, we're only, you can't, I love that saying, you can't be, it's hard to be well in a sick society. If you aren't taking care of, if you aren't taking care of of everyone from, from the bottom up, if you aren't taking care of of the children, the public education system, if you're not investing in libraries and providing people opportunities for for learning and engagement and entertainment, you're not going to have a strong community, you're going to have more unhappy people, you're going to have more social disorder, you're going to have more crime. In America, the, for years, they would look at how many prisons they need to build based on the grade three reading level. So they, yeah, so they would, they would say, okay, we know, because if you're not reading by grade three, it's almost impossible. It's very, very hard to complete high school and if you don't complete high school, you're more likely to end up in a life of crime, right? And so they would factor that in and it's because it's privatized, it's all this, it's a mess in the United States. But like, we, we know it's hard to be well in a sick society, but if we as Alberta and we as Edmonton, if we have great after school programs, if we have great youth sports, if we have great libraries and opportunities for everyone, for all ages, wages and stages of life, from, from little kids to seniors, if we build a a pleasant community where people want to be, people are happier, people are coming out to festivals, people are spending money in the local economy, going to restaurants, doing everything else, and we're all stronger for it. So it's, it's the idea, I was riding the bus with my kid the other day and he threw something on, like a wrapper on the floor and I said, what are you doing? And he's like, well, it's, he's like, I couldn't, blah, 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 blah. And I said, that's our bus, this is our bus, we own this bus. He's like, what are you talking about? We own it? I'm like, yeah, we do, it's owned by all of us, it is our bus, it is public transit, we own it. It's not, it doesn't, when you, when you spend four bucks getting on the bus, the money doesn't go to enrich some billionaire in New York City on the stock exchange. The money goes into the public transit system to make transit better. So when you're littering on the bus, we now have to take that money and hire somebody to clean the bus. It was sort of like, oh, okay, you know, and it's that idea. So when I, when I go buy a library, when I go buy a rec center, when I go buy a bus or a train or anything else, it's that sense, we own this, this is ours, we should take pride in it. And so public services to me are the, are the foundation of democracy. It's the idea that we should be able to go out and exist in a city for a day without having to spend a dollar, that that we should be able to enjoy great things together, that all of us should be able to go into the River Valley or or go out for a skate or or anything and not have to, not have to worry about just like, oh, this is just a private club for the rich people. Or this is just for people, like when you go to the shopping mall, well, you can't be here unless you buy a drink or something. You know, it's, it's, it's about that, that, that public service, that's really important to me.
Yeah, yeah, I believe Edmonton and Canada as a whole, I, I migrated all the way from the Philippines. So I know what actual, like real poverty looks like. I'm not taken away from like the people that are actually struggling here because I know it is very tough. But all I'm saying is I'm very thankful to be a part of Sherwood Park, of Edmonton, of Canada as a whole. And yes, there's things that we could work on, but I do see the the Rundle Park. Like I've been there many times, just on walks, I can go for a run, I feel safe. And I am an advocate for all these public services, like going to the gym and building community. Because without all these buildings, all these recreational facilities, like I wouldn't be where I am today. You know, I wouldn't be able to have a podcast like this because that's where I meet people, that's where I I network and that's where I I feel like myself. And in comparison to just growing up in the Philippines, right? There's, I see so much good, so much positivity. And I always, I do talk about my, my love for Canada and Edmonton and specifically Sherwood Park too. And then there's a lot of people that really get angry because they're unhappy with the situation that it's in. But I, I don't know, maybe I'm just too optimistic.
No, no, it's, I think, I think you're on to something there, it's funny. So I'm, I'm in the election right now, we go door to door, we knock on every single door, knock, knock, I'm your city councillor, how's, how's it going? And the happiest people I find in Edmonton are the ones who just got here in the five to 10 years, they're like, man. How's, how's it going? And the happiest people I find in Edmonton are the ones who just got here in the five to 10 years. They're like, man, I remember this guy, uh, from Newfoundland. He's like, I can afford two cars here. I've got a house here. I've, I've got, I've got everything. You guys have no idea how good you have it. But strangely, some of the most unhappy people here are like, I remember when Gretzky played for the Oilers and then you traded him. And it's like, what? Like it's, it's so weird. Like the happiest people are like come from away. You know what I mean?
I think it's because they don't know, uh, what it's like to, to not, not afford, not be able to afford certain things. And for electricity to be cut off. I know when I was with my mom in the Philippines, like we weren't well off. So there was, we were constantly in a place where it was tough to, to get by. We didn't feel safe.
You don't worry about the Abu Sayyaf kidnapping you.
Exactly. Um, there's just so many things that we were just consciously aware of. And it's just, and then you come here and the, the people are extremely nice. And the facilities are clean, the washrooms are well taken care of, the roads, there's like barely any potholes. And that's all thanks to people like you. I don't think.
It's not me, it's the people before me who have built this. It's, we stand on the shoulders of giants. Yeah.
As a whole, and we need to be able to do better, of course, and take gratitude into what we do have. Because it could be taken away. This isn't, this isn't just a given, right? To, to be safe. And I have heard though of people feeling unsafe. And I don't know whether it's, it's the news or it's just like fear mongering. But I have talked to my prof and she said that crime rates have like gone down. Like if you look at the data, what do you think of that?
Yeah, you know, crime has gone down. Crime severity is, um, uh, crime, but it's this feeling of, um, facts don't care about your feelings kind of thing. Like if you still feel unsafe, if you, if you don't want to go to the park, if you don't want to go, um, uh, in, in the street. If it's, it doesn't matter what the stats say. And so making people figure out not just what it, what does it mean to be safe, but also feel safe. And I think that's, that's a really, we gotta get both. You know what I mean? And for some people, feeling safe means just better lighting. Other people, it means a more visible presence of security. Other people, it's the opposite. Um, and so figuring out what that means. And, um, uh, it's, it's, it's a challenge. I mean, one of, one of the most deadly things you do every day is get behind the wheel of your car. The number one way that you are going to get either killed or have a serious injury is every time you get behind the wheel. Um, we have the deadliest summer on record here and, uh, in, in, in Edmonton. Part of that is the, the, the removal of photo radar. We're seeing way more speeding. We're seeing way more dangerous driving. Uh, part of it is, is, is just sort of a, um, a, a volume issue of, of, of more people and more traffic and more disobedience. Um, but it's something we, we've been talking a lot about. The police have been talking a lot about, um, I often say like people, what's safer flying or driving? People always say, you know, drive, well, no, uh, plane crash would kill you. It's like, yeah, but planes are actually statistically much more safe. So it's, it's the same thing. Like safety is so multifaceted and, and it's not just the, it's not just the fear of the, the man in the bushes in the alley. It's, it's, it's this whole piece of everything going, going down to our, our healthcare system, making sure everybody feels safe. That you're not going to get measles at the library, you know?
Yeah. I like what you said about, yes, you can, like, maybe safety has, has gone up and the crime rates have gone down. But do people actually feel safe? And there's a big difference because you can tell people, yeah, uh, crime rates gone down 30% in the last 10 years. But like, no, I just don't feel safe. There's people that look sketchy there and there's kind of the, I don't, it feels a bit ominous. Maybe it's like a mental health thing, but there's another, um, facet too, where the person feels safe. Like, do they actually feel like they're not going to be attacked if they're riding the LRT? Like, do they feel like the people there have their best interest is, is the, uh, policing? Like, do they feel like their presence, does it make them feel more safe? Does that make it feel less safe for them? And it's just all about kind of what the citizens feel, you know?
Yeah. And, and I like, I like in your videos where you have to ask people, how do you make friends or how do you? Because I think that, that sense of that social connection is the, is the foundation of safety, right? So I, I try and, I always say to my children, every new neighbor or every new stranger is a new potential best friend. And I try and help them have that mentality where you can look at every person as a danger and a threat or, or maybe a new best friend, right? And sure, like you'll get let down sometimes or, you know, it, you gotta make sure you still have healthy boundaries. But, but yeah, just like how many people feel unsafe because all they're doing is looking at their phone on the train or looking at their phone on the bus. It's not like, oh, I know that person. We were in the same class together. I like, oh, I saw that person at the gym. And I just like even talking to somebody beside you and just being like, hey, you doing okay? That's, that's huge.
I guess maybe the antidote to feeling unsafe would be community and getting to know the people around you. Cause if you, if you don't know anyone, if you don't have any friends, then everyone's a threat. And that plagues your lens to thinking that they're your enemies. And maybe they won't just outright assault you. But maybe they'll say something mean. Maybe that's like what you'll perceive as a threat that is most likely. And that, maybe that could annihilate your sense of well-being, right? So yeah, I think the antidote to that is just getting to know the people around you. Cause I've, I've always, I've said this many times on this show and many times to my friends and family members is, uh. The antidote to judgment and misunderstanding is communication. So if you got that guy that somehow annoys you because of their behavior at the gym, like granted, they're not doing anything that goes against the rules. They're just not to the person that you'd really talk to.
Putting their plates away.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe they're not putting, maybe they're not putting on the plates away. But then when you actually talk to that person, they're actually like a stand up guy. Or maybe they genuinely just forgot about the plates, right? And they're actually really funny. And I, I never take anyone, um, for granted. And I never like, they think the worst people. Uh, the worst thing that people can do is to underestimate someone. Because if you think about David Goggins, right? The guy we talked about, um, but you think about kind of the, the business moguls. That even the, the prime minister, the president, right? Before they were where they were, they were just a student. One day, they were in middle school one time. They were in elementary, right? And for people to discount them, I'm sure many have along their path of their dreams and ambitions and go, huh? You, you wanna be a business owner? You want to have your own restaurant? Oh, you want to be an ultra athlete and crush marathons? Oh, good luck. Like that's never really been done before. And then they go and do it, right? And so you, you meet that person at the gym, when you meet that person at the library, it's better to be kind. Get to know them, right? Because you never know what doors that will open. And throughout the podcast, that's how I've operated. And it's granted so many doors. Cause prior to starting the podcast, I, I kind of always thought that, oh, nobody would really. Want to be on the show, you know, who am I? What am I gonna, what do I have to offer? But by just changing the narrative of, huh, like maybe if I truly get to know this person, if I work on myself, if I just. Get rid of the barrier of judgments of just negativity, then I'll, this is my hypothesis. Then I'd better connect with people and they'd actually want to be my friend.
And willing to be vulnerable, which is what you've done, just saying, hey, I want to do this. And that's the thing I always felt when I speak to, uh, student leaders or classes. I always say Edmonton is a very flat city. Like there's no real gatekeepers here. Like, like how do, how do we meet? We're like, okay, um, one friend introduced us, we're texting, I call you with an idea, you like the idea, boom, I'm here in your chair. Like, do you think in Toronto, you're like two phone calls away from getting the mayor or a city councillor or somebody else? Like, that's the cool thing about Edmonton. We're still a small town in a way.
We're cohesive.
Yeah. And it, and like you would, like, I, I found it shocking when I got elected to city council, how few people actually write you. There's a hundred thousand people in my area. Um, I don't get a hundred thousand emails. So when somebody does reach out and say, hey, by the way, I want to work with you to get this new library, this new park, this new swimming pool. That's, you know, that's a, that's a new lead. And, and so, um, I always, anybody reaches out to me and I try and grab coffee with them. I try and figure out what is it you want to improve? What is it you're interested in? And how can I help you with that?
Of course, yeah. And also is the lights, lighting okay? Just the love, the love for Canada, Edmonton. Um, so municipal politics often feel.
Good eye. I didn't notice that. Yeah.
Often feel overlooked compared to provincial or federal. Why should everyday Edmontonians care about city hall decisions, especially around affordability?
The two biggest drivers of cost in your life are typically your housing, your shelter and your transportation. And that's a, if we as a city, we have a lot of power in where housing is built, how housing is built. Whether we are going to build a more affordable city with more housing choices or a more scarce city with less housing choices. Uh, we have a lot of power over, do you need to have a car or is a car an option? We have a lot of power over, are we going to have good public transit or great public transit? These are the kinds of decisions that are made at city hall. And if you want a more affordable city, if you want more housing choices, if you want more options close to where you want to live. If you want to be able to walk or bike or, or, or drive or, or have transit and be safe. And, and have a, a more affordable city, this all starts at city hall. And that's, you know, across Canada, we hear politicians talk about the housing crisis. Well, the number one thing we can do is legalize more homes, build more homes, allow more homes to be built. And that's what Edmonton's done. And that's what other cities are doing. But that's coming out of city hall. That's not coming out of Ottawa. Um, same thing with transportation costs. If we're able to help people, you know, have more affordable transit, but also faster and more frequent transit. If you have the option of saying, yeah, I've got a new job downtown, uh, if you have to drive and you have, and you have to pay for parking and pay for gas and be waiting in traffic. Um, that's, that's a huge cost, not just to your pocketbook, but your quality of life, your time, your, your time not at the gym or with your family or outside. Or, you know, even, uh, even reading, right? So for me, city planning is always like the core. It's the base of how we build a community, how we build our lives. We know cities that are more walkable are happier, healthier, um, more people know their neighbors, they're safer. Uh, that's the kind of city I want to build. That's the kind of city I want to live in. And we're, we're getting there. You're seeing that happening in Edmonton and more places. Places that used to be just like parking lots or empty fields or, um, like the picture over by Commonwealth Stadium. I mean, 10, 20 years ago, it was just blank. Now there's all these new apartments and options right beside a train station, right beside a gym, right beside a field, right beside the river valley. That's amazing. We gotta do that more often in more places.
Mm-hmm. And even at the, the federal level, it's like, it seems so out of reach, you know? Cause it's like the, at the entire nation, but when you vote for the city, when you're involved in there. You have better reach and you can actually talk to the people handling it.
Hundred percent. Yeah. A guy reached out to me and said, I'm a student. It is unfair that if I, if I was low income, I would get to go to the zoo and I would get to go to the pool. Uh, for free or at a low, a low cost, the, the leisure access program. But because I'm a post-secondary student, a full-time student, I'm not eligible to get that subsidy. And I said, yeah, that's a good point. That's not fair. And so now, you know, council is reviewing the criteria for how we offer low income or free recreation, attractions. Um, all of that for, for people in the community. And that's, that's really exciting. And it happened because, you know, people just emailed their city councillor. And now we're, now we're moving that forward. That's, that's what, you can, it's so hard to do that in Ottawa. You know what I mean? It's so hard to do that at the province, um, the party system, the, 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 all of that, all of that, um, just complexity that comes with. Other orders of government, you don't have that at city hall.
Yeah.
If you're in Sherwood Park, if you're anywhere, if you're in any community and you say, here's one thing I want to make better. Um, whatever your issue is, is it climate change? Best thing we can do for climate change is drive less. How do we build a city where you drive less? Your issue is poverty or homelessness? How do we build a city where, where, where we, we have more options for people? If whatever your topic that you care about, um, there's a, there's a, there's a link to city hall.
Yeah, yeah. And that email likely goes straight to the person you're writing it to. Because as you said earlier, there's like, what, like a hundred thousand people that are wanting to write an email. And then only really, you know, a hundred of them go through with it. And it's just, yeah. You have a lot more initiative, a lot more control when it comes to the city, and especially being a part of it and what do you want to see change?
Yeah. From the moment you turn 18, so many people think, oh, well, I live in the city, but I don't own a home. Can I vote? Yes, you can. Oh, I'm a renter. Can I vote? Yes, you can. Oh, I'm a student. I just got here in September. Yes, you can. And, and it's critical that more students and more young people vote and engage because half of Edmonton right now is under 40. Half of the city is under 40 years old, right? So what is the city that we're going to inherit? Um, are we going to have better transit? Are we going to have faster buses? Are we going to have, um, more housing choices in more places? Or are we just going to continue what we've done for the last hundred years and sprawl all the way out to the airport, forcing more car dependency? Um, you know, kind of grinding down the services and not building any new pools or libraries or amenities. I think the opposite. I think now more than ever, we need to really build because Edmonton and Alberta is going to keep growing. Um, we're a very resilient place. Um, we're going to see a lot more people here. We're going to see, I, I want us to stay here. I don't want Edmonton to be the kind of place where you finish high school and say, I'm leaving. I want this to be the place where you build a life.
Yeah, I love that. And so the housing crisis is a top of mind for many. How do you see cooperative housing, renter protections and diverse housing options playing a role in solving it?
Yeah. I mean, we kind of are, we, in Canada, we kind of have a system where you either rent space from a landlord or you rent money from a bank. And that's kind of it, right? And it's almost, almost always the number one cost to a family, to an individual is your cost of housing, your mortgage, your shelter. Your home insurance, everything else. And for too long, we've kind of had just like, you either have a one or two bedroom apartment in a high rise. Or you have a, a big single family home. And there was nothing really in between. We call it the missing middle. We're trying to figure out, okay, how do we offer other options? How do we have more three or four bedroom condos for families? Um, how do we have, um, more townhouses or row houses? How do we have more options? And so we're, we're trying to get there because, um, the, the market alone won't solve the housing crisis. But when we have, um, two restrictive rules, that doesn't benefit us at all. Um, so I, I am, I'm really lucky that the cooperative housing model is an idea of shared ownership. It's an idea that, um, you, you're breaking away from, from the mortgages or, or the, or the landlords. That any money that is made in the housing is reinvested into the housing. It's about taking housing and looking at it not as an investment vehicle or a private good, but as a public good. That you should be able to, to, to live in a building and the money from that building is reinvested into that building. And when you leave, you don't make a profit. Somebody else moves in and benefits from that building. So it's, it's kind of, um, just like the library, just like the healthcare system or the education system, the idea that we're all investing together. It's more common in Montreal, it's more common in, in Vancouver, it's more common in other, um, in other countries. But there's not, there's not many in, in, uh, um, in Edmonton and Canada right now. And I think that's a mistake. I think it's something we should be growing. Um, because so long as you're, you know, every, every time you, if you have to go and do something, somebody makes a buck. It, it, uh, it can, it can be, it can be quite limiting and it, it leads to a, a worse experience for all involved. But, um, there's no magic bullet to the housing crisis. There's a whole bunch of different things. It's building more homes. It's, it's, it's helping, helping the folks who need the help the most have different kinds of, different kinds of housing with social supports. Um, it's, it's, it's a lot. It's, it's a huge issue. But, um, we know everything gets worse when we just stop building and we, we lead to more scarcity and more problems.
Yeah. And it's like paying it forward, right? When you're in this place, like you're, if you're trying to make profit, right? You're just, you want to constrict people's ability to move around unless they pay more. And kind of that makes the person unhappy because you're, you're just, they need money to spend more on food, right? And then when you're upping the rents and all this stuff that, that tarnishes the relationship. But strip that away and you have a person that, oh, after I leave this place, I'm going to, it's going to be extended out to another fellow Edmontonian. Who is maybe in the exact same position as me, then it just feels a lot more freeing, more liberating, right?
Yeah. And I mean, um, it's harder and harder to get a mortgage, to have a down payment, to have the coast, all of that. It's, 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 it's very hard. So I think giving people an option to think about, how can I, how can I live without that? Edmonton used to own a phone company. Edmonton used to own an internet company. And it was all the profits were reinvested back into, into the company in Saskatchewan. Uh, if you, if you have a phone there, it, you can get it through the Saskatchewan, um, phone program. The car insurance is through the Saskatchewan insurance program. But, um, Edmonton and, uh, 20, 30 years ago, sold off that internet company and, and sold off that phone company. And now in Canada, we're basically, you have two choices for internet and two choices for phone. And we pay the highest rates with the worst service around the world. You look at, you look at it and it's like, why? Because we've allowed ourselves to fall into this monopoly position where they have all the, all the cards and they take all our money. Um, other countries, you get way better, way better phone coverage. So what is it, what do we have to do to, to have better regulations to make sure that, you know, the consumer is protected? This isn't a left wing or right wing idea. Every dollar you're spending on your phone bill is a dollar that you can't go and spend at a local restaurant or somewhere else. So you see these, these billion, billion dollar companies getting richer and richer and richer, um, naming stadiums after themselves. And then here you and I are shelling out more money every month for crappy internet.
Yeah, you're right. I, I definitely feel that. Seeing those big stadiums, like how can they afford this? I'm like, oh, the plans and it's just.
You're welcome. Every month, baby.
Yeah. culmination of everything now. Here, if you turn the mic to the red, the red towards you, there we go.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, the culmination of all this, it's like, did even the introduction or like the pictures, right? The music, it's all just together. And it's just from 1% improvement after 150 episodes.
Some, my brother's a musician and he always says, if you don't look back at your work from five years ago and you're not embarrassed by it, that means you haven't grown. I was like, yep, good point.
True. Or if you're stuck in place, you never progressed.
Totally. Yeah.
Uh, so with affordability challenges from rent to groceries to transportation. What specifics policies do you believe will most directly impact the wallets of students and working families?
So a couple of things. Number one, more housing choices in more places, legalizing more housing, allowing students to have more options for where they want to live. Being able to, to get, um, more one or two or three bedroom accommodations. That's, that's really critical. Especially places close to campus or close to work. Where you don't have to spend your life in transit, uh, on the bus or driving. Number two, giving people more housing choices that are close to where they want to live. So they don't have to drive as much. If we can help students go and study without having to own a car, without having to worry about parking, without having to worry about gas and insurance and everything else. Insurance has just been, uh, ridiculous in Alberta. I saw in CBC News, it said, insuring a Honda Civic is now $7,000 a year. Like that's, that's a ton of money. I mean, we, we know according to Rate Hub, which is an insurance company, that the cost of car ownership is about $15,000 a year. So if you have a car or if your family has two cars, that could be 30,000 a year. That's, that's an enormous amount of money. So those things, the housing and transportation are, are the pillar, are the, the foundation of affordability. And we as a city can do a lot there. More specifically for students, um, I want to improve our, our criteria around the leisure access program. We have this phenomenal program in Edmonton that allows low-income folks access to the zoo, access to the city attractions, actions, access to the Mozart conservatory, um, affordable transit, et cetera. But, and our recreation centers, what I want to do is expand that criteria to include full-time post-secondary students. Right now it doesn't include students. If you're a student, you're not eligible, um, which I think is a mistake and a missed opportunity. If we could allow the students of Edmonton who are full-time, who are busy studying and, and, and busy, uh, they're, they're not able to, to augment their income. If we can allow them still access to, to wave pools, to outdoor pools, to the golf courses, to the zoo, to our other amenities. I think it's going to be huge improvement to quality of life. It'll get people excited about coming to Edmonton. More young people will discover, hey, this is a pretty cool place. I want to live here when I graduate. They'll stay here, build, build our economy, everything else. Um, they set up these programs a few years ago and they didn't include students because I think it's that old mindset of like, oh, well, students, their parents can help pay or something else. But that's not the reality. Um, and students are busy. I'm not worried about like, uh, somebody in full-time studies going to the zoo every weekend and freeloaded. Like they're going to be busy. You know what I mean? But if they can allow, if it allows them to maybe go to a wave pool or go out to, um, uh, check out one of our city amenities. They're going to love living here. So expanding the leisure access program is, uh, one of the, the, the priorities for me. I recently brought it to city council to get my colleagues to agree to review and they did. They voted unanimously saying, yep, this is, this is important. So, uh, I'm hoping to get reelected and to have that, uh, initiative, um, advance and, and build a city where, um, no matter what you're doing, whether you're, you know, whether you're studying full-time or, or you're, or you're low income, or you're working full-time and you're wealthy, you should have access to great things to do in your own community.
Yeah. I mean, we were on the phone, uh, a week ago to talk, to discuss the activities around Edmonton. And for students that can't afford it, they're blinded of the beauty, that's the, the zoo and the parks and the, the water park that we have, the galaxy land. There's so many opportunities to be able to have fun and connect and make friends.
Technically galaxy land wouldn't be included because it's still wetland in Tumalin. We can't really do that. But like we got Millwoods Rec Center, we got, um, uh, you go to Twilliger, they've got a lazy river and a steam room. We've got great dream gyms and outdoor tracks. We, uh, and indoor tracks. We've got, um, so many things that the city offers, including like space for basketball or soccer or whatever else. And like, I, I remember, um, I had never gone to the Kinsman until, you know, I lived in Edmonton 12, 12 or 13 years because I was a student. And people say, oh, well, they can go work out at the U of A or Nate or McEwen. Sure. But what about, what about all the other amenities? What if you live at home and, and maybe it's closer to go to hardest sea pool? Maybe you, maybe I, I don't recall, but I don't think the U of A has a hot tub and steam room. I don't think they have, it's not a true recreation center. It doesn't have a diving board and a Tarzan swing and everything else. Sauna, exactly. Right? So, so it's, it's about this, this idea of we need to open up more of our amenities to the whole city. Like just because you're a student, it shouldn't mean a vow of poverty for four years. It shouldn't mean that you don't get nice things. Because if you dropped out of school and you were low income, you would get access to these things. So why are we punishing a student for choosing post-secondary, for paying tuition, for trying to better themselves in our community? Why are we saying, oh, no, you don't get to go, you don't get to have that, have this now? That's, that's, that's wrong.
Yeah. And when you're a student, like chances are you're probably working part-time or you don't have any money or you're going through student loans. So how are you going to be able to go to the zoo? Like go to the recreational facilities if it's farther from your house? Or like if the Van Leeuwen complex, which is the U of A gym, right? If that's just doesn't align with the schedule, then it's going to make your health deteriorates. Cause you won't have access, right? And, uh, we want to be able to make the students stay, right?
Yeah.
And we need to attach kind of the, the core memories of their students' wellbeing and kind of their experience to be in a positive light. To ensure that, oh, they, they go back into Edmonton and they go, huh, like I want to live here. I want to raise a family here. Cause this is where I want to show my kids, this is the facility that I grew up in. This is where all, I made my friends and it becomes personal to them.
Hundred percent. And students pay taxes too. They either pay taxes if they, if they own a home or through their family, or they pay taxes through their rent. The, the landlord then pays the taxes. So shouldn't they have access? Have you been to any of the outdoor pools in Edmonton?
Outdoor pools?
Like Mill Creek, Mill Creek Pool off, or Queenie Pool down by the Kinsman.
I've been to the gyms.
Yeah. So, so if you go to the outdoor pools, they're incredible and they're, they're available, you know, during, during the, the, the summer. I think if more students discovered those, I think it would, I think it'd be amazing. The other thing too, is that the city spends money on marketing. The city buys ads and the city, you know, does, does promotions, right? What better promotion for the city than more people using it and more word of mouth? Like if you went out with your friends to Mill Creek Pool, had a great time, got a little sunburn, had a good, like you would be telling everybody, you'd be posting on socials, you'd be saying, yo, come to this. And what happens? More people come, more admissions, more revenue. I, again, it's this, I think if we go to an abundance mindset, that there, there's enough pool for everyone. There's enough gym for everyone. There's enough, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's just going to be better all around. And, uh, and I think for too long, the, uh, um, the thinking around students is, is, uh, they're more wealthier than they are. They want to go drink and party, blah, 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 blah. And fewer and fewer students are, are engaged in alcohol culture. They want to go out on the weekend or do something else that doesn't involve drinking. Uh, and maybe they drink sometimes, but not as much. Or maybe they want something else. Why shouldn't they have that? Why shouldn't they be able to, you know, um, have a date and go to the Mootards and take a couple of pictures there, you know? Like it's, it's just giving people options where they live.
Yeah. Yeah. It's definitely, being a student myself, I, um, yeah, the majority of students there, even if their parents are paying for the schooling. They still have the budget like that. They're not given like hundreds of thousands of dollars to be able to squander and throw it out everywhere. A lot of them have to be diligent with their money because to get to that, to get to financial freedom, you need to be able to allocate the resources properly. And if you just don't have the, the bandwidth, the wiggle room to add that in to your schedule to go to the, to go to the swimming pools, then you know, you're just not going to know anything about the city.
And would you agree that as a student, your number one currency, your most important currency is your time? That you've got to study, you've got to do everything else. So like, why are we worried about worst case scenario? A couple of students, you know, going to the sauna, um, and not paying, like not paying full price. Like it's, uh, that should be the least of our problems. We should be worried about those students than, you know, becoming doctors and wanting to stay in Edmonton, right? Make them love where you live. The dividends pay off later.
I like the, the long-term mindset you have onto this because the students, yeah, podcast. Because later on, these same students and what? It's going to be four years, five years, and maybe it's six years if they take a couple of extra years.
Golf for free for four summers and then you buy a million dollar home in your city and pay taxes for the next 50.
Yeah.
I think that's positive ROI.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah, totally.
Like, yeah, if you, you save them, what? Like a hundred bucks per month? And then later on, they'll be making like 50, 80K per year, a hundred K per year. And they'll be there for decades.
Totally.
And I'm, I'm told they retire in Edmonton.
Yeah.
And it's just like, yes, you can, you have to pay more upfront for the, the, the short term.
Yeah.
But in the long term, it's, you have these people raising families and then they'll, they'll also recommend their kids to school to, to go to the post-secondary in Edmonton. Cause oh, like when I was a student there, they gave me some cool discounts and I just, I got to meet so many cool people.
Totally. And another, yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, if you, um, there's lots of great organizations, not the city, like, like for example, the Windspear. You can, if you have a student ID, many students don't know this, but they'll give you discount tickets to the symphony here, to the opera and something else. You can try so much cool stuff around the city. We need to make sure that the city-owned programs are included as, as part of this. And I think in the past, uh, this, the, the city bureaucrats have sort of looked at it as, oh, well, if that's a thousand people not paying at the zoo, that's lost money. I, I think that's wrong because I think what's happening is students just don't go to the zoo. They just don't do, do these things. It's money we'd never have anyway. So just, yeah, expand the leisure access program, build more housing, build more transit. Let's go.
Yeah, no, I really want to go to the zoo now and take my friends.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so I know you're a big, uh, you love Edmonton, right? That's why you constantly want to make it better. So you've highlighted that students rely on public transport more than most. What's at stake for them? When transit is underfunded or inaccessible?
The first thing that comes to mind. So I, I, I don't own a car. I live on White Ave. I take the bus every day. I'm, I'm a Yegroot for, yeah. I, uh, and, um, what happens is I, I'm on the four in the, in the morning and it is jam-packed. It's standing room only. Sometimes I'm right up against the driver. And they have to, they, they come by a bus stop. They cannot let another passenger on. The technical term is that's called a pass up. Every time a bus goes by and it can't take somebody, they pass them up. They have to report that, right? And, and we've seen that because our buses are so full, we're seeing pass-ups climbing and climbing, more people being literally left behind by the bus. That means you don't get to school on time. That means you miss your class, your test, your whatever. So at a very granular level, we need more buses on the road, more hours of service, especially where we know people are. And so that's a, that's a really big priority for me is continuing, just as our population has grown 150,000 people, have our hours of service of the bus kept up. The bus is truly like, it's the, it's the, um, it's the, uh, like the blood of, of our transit system. The, the LRT is great. It's really important as well too. We, it, but, but getting bus service is critical to get people for what we call often the first mile or the last mile. Okay. How do you get to the train? How do you get connected from there? And so there's a couple of things I'm really excited about that we're going to build. Number one is called the, the bus rapid transit system. So we're going to build these like express buses, like rapid buses. They have their dedicated lane. They go super fast. One of them is from Bonnydune Mall to West Edmonton Mall. So instead of stopping every block or so, they stop every like one or two kilometers. And so it's a rapid bus and that's, that's, we've planned it. It's ready to go. It just needs to be funded. We need to vote to allocate our taxes to pay for that project. It has to be a priority. So the first one is, is Bonnydune Mall to West Edmonton Mall. The other one is Century Park up to Castle Downs. And the third one is from the U of A down to like Ambleside. So all your listeners who are down in Riverbend, down in Ambleside, down in Twilliger. If we have this rapid bus, I mean, imagine getting, getting on at the, the, the T C R C, but being, being able to fly through traffic in a dedicated lane. Not waiting and not waiting in traffic jams. It drives me nuts when I'm on a bus and there's over 40 people. We're standing there, we're packed up against the window. And I'm looking and there's like three or four cars ahead of us with one person in each of them. And I'm like, how is this fair? How it's, it's not. So being able to have dedicated bus lanes, more hours of service, these things, these things put money back in your pocket. They put time back in your day, your time bank, right? You gotta fill it up and, and time wasted in traffic doesn't benefit anyone. And you know who benefits the most? Drivers. Because the more people we get onto transit, that's less traffic on the roads. That's less cars in front of you. That's less people competing with you for parking at the U of A. The more we can get people onto the bus, the more people we can get people into bike lanes, the more people we can get walking. Who wins? Drivers. Cause you're not competing with everyone else.
Less road rage.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Yeah.
The state of Massachusetts, um, did a study, how much do cars cost society? And just in the state of Massachusetts alone, the vehicle economy costs $65 billion a year. That's more than the entire budget of Alberta. Um, and, and they factored in injuries, they factored in collisions, they factored in traffic safety. They factored in roads, potholes, maintenance, building bridges, everything. Um, and it was $65 billion. So like cars are so expensive. Building cities around cars is so expensive. Every, every parking space is a space that, um, could be an apartment, could be a classroom, could be something else. The fact that at a main campus at the U of A, we dedicate so much space to parking and, uh, you know, that's, is that the best use? What if there was more residences? What if there's more housing? What if there were more classrooms or other opportunities? And what if, you know, you could park somewhere closer, uh, or park somewhere further away and then take a rapid bus in? That's better for everybody.
Yeah. Imagine if you can get like even just 50% of people to stop driving and just take LRT everywhere, bus everywhere. Like imagine that all the money that people save, that they could allocate to going out or to saving and to living a better quality life. It's like you, you save so much and people's lives just become better.
Hundred percent. Yeah. Hundred percent. And, and, and we see that around the world. That's why like, like it, you don't, you don't hear people in Japan or China being like, oh, I wish we built more highways. You know, like you see people in Europe, uh, investing in a big way in trains and transit and everything else. That's, uh, um, it's, it's, it's game changers. And, uh, um, you know, we always said, well, cars are freedom. And it's like, well, yeah, but as long as you and I don't exercise our freedom at the exact same time or we're both competing for that one parking stall. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so Edmonton's green spaces and River, River Valley are often called the city's greatest asset. How do you see investments in these spaces improving overall quality of life?
Yeah. Um, I'm like, like many love our River Valley. It's our playground. I'm, I'm like 10 blocks away from it. Um, there's a lot of things that we're doing in terms of, um, improving access, adding more stairways, adding more pathways. We're in the process of fixing up Horlock Park, which really is our central park. It's such an incredible space. It's going to be opening this fall. We're opening a new, um, mountain bike skills park down by, uh, the Kinsman Rec Center. You can, like, there's so many things that, that we can do. And I think it's, it's critical as we're building a city, as we're densifying that we're preserving green space and park space, but not just like green space in terms of grass, but actual green space that people will use. I'll give you an example. In, in my neighborhood and in my ward, there's, there's two big patches of grass that for like 30 years have just been grass. But we now turn them into fenced off-leash dog parks. So people go with their dogs. They, it's fenced. They go in, they can hang out. The dogs run around. It uses the space better. People get to know their neighbors. So little things like dog parks are, are really popular and, and they contribute to safety, wellbeing, loneliness, everything else. Because people are coming to hang with one another. So just doing a lot more creative uses of the land we have, the most valuable thing we have as a city is our land. And we often say, are we using this land to the highest and best use? Is just a field of grass that we have to mow and worry about? Is that the best thing? Or should we be doing something else? Could this be a playground? Could this be an amphitheater? Could this be a dog park? Maybe it stays grass. I don't know. But, you know, for, for, I think generations, we built two-inch Kentucky bluegrass fields. And now with, with drought, with climate change, with everything else going on, surely we can do better than that.
Yeah. And then nature also has some healing effects. There's a lot of research that's come out that just being in nature, walking around just alleviates a lot of the stress and makes you feel whole.
Isn't it crazy? You're in a city of like 1.25 million people and you're running in Rundell?
Yeah.
And it's like, yeah, nuts. So much fun.
Yeah. And, uh, even, even on Sherwood Park, there's so many in all the neighborhoods here, we've got a lot of trails and it's just like, so many trees. And you feel zen.
And that's the whole bike lane debate in Edmonton. Like in Sherwood Park, you could bike anywhere because there's pathways everywhere, right? But in Edmonton, we never did that. We just built road and then grass. So Sherwood Park built road, multi-use pathway, grass, right? And so when I'm in Sherwood Park and I'm biking here, it's amazing. You can, you can get anywhere you want to go. There's no bike lane debate in Sherwood Park because you have the pathways built automatically. Sherwood Park's a much younger city. But in Edmonton, in the core of Edmonton for a hundred years, it was just road, maybe sidewalk. And then grass or house or business, right? And so now we're in the process where we're having to go back and retrofit the core of our city so that you can bike to the U of A safely. Because we never did what Sherwood Park did, which is having those paths built automatically. Now we do. Now in Edmonton, it's, it's, it's a design standard. When you build a new neighborhood, you have to have the pathways, you have to have the connectivity. But we have to go back and fix all the neighborhoods that were built before, you know, 1980.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's good exercise too. And have like, you're going to see the increase in demand. So why not just do it in the first place?
Hundred percent. We're going to be a city of 2 million people. We cannot afford to be a city of 2 million cars. We want to have space. There'll be too much traffic. It'll be a nightmare. Nobody wants to live in Southern Ontario because there's so much traffic and it's so spread out. People want to live over here. That's why we're seeing so much in migration to Edmonton.
Yeah, true. Edmonton's a beautiful place to live. And you've spoken about programs like student leisure access passes like we did. So how do initiatives like this foster not just recreation, but also belonging and community pride?
I think if, uh, if people love where they live, they want to stay where they live. We talk often about the investment in post-secondary is a talent magnet. We want to bring people from around the world to Edmonton. They'll start businesses here. They'll work here. Companies want to know that they have a pool of incredible talent and work. We've got some really cool things happening at the U of A around engineering, around medical, around AI, around everything else. Well, though, if you're, if you're a talented AI software engineer, you could live anywhere. We're, we're competing with Austin, Texas. We're competing with San Francisco. We're competing with, um, Vancouver. And there's some things we'll never have. We'll never have the ocean. We'll never have the mountains. But I think that we can, we have an affordability advantage. We have a quality of life advantage. We have an incredible place to, to raise a family. Those are, those are our competitive advantages. We really need to lean into. We want every single student, grad student, everybody else to say, this is where I want to stay. This is where I want to build my life. That was my experience. I came in, I came here in 2003 from Southern Alberta. I never looked back. This is, this is where I want to be.
Yeah. That's, that's phenomenal, man. And I, I'm definitely voting for you. Must spread the word out there. Cause I feel like a lot of students don't know about the opportunities that, um, that the city has to offer, right?
Well, I, I remember when I was a student, like the city politic, that it was like, oh, a city election, a new mayor, a new councillor, like, I didn't know anything about it, but they never came and talked to me. They never came on a podcast. They never, they never came and told me why the city mattered to them. So I've, I've really worked as a, as a councillor to try. So I've, I've really worked as a, as a councillor to try and engage students, meeting with student leaders. I've gone and presented to the, the Grad Students Association, the Student Union. I've gone to student groups. I, I had all the planning students over, over to my house for pizza, just to say like, hey, this is your city. What do you want it to be?
Yeah.
And I think if we do that, we'll see more students voting, more student concerns represented and, and a better city for everybody.
Yeah. Cause I had no idea that I could have this much agency in my own city.
Totally.
Now that I could actually vote for these student leisure access passes and have someone advocate for me or just be in contact with someone that wants the best for the people, right? I didn't know that because there's just nobody that, that came and talked to us about it, right? So now that thank you so much for this opportunity and it's just, it's phenomenal. Kind of what you've, what you've built and what you're still striving to do today.
I remember I was, I was the president of Lister. I was the president of Lister and I, and I wrote the city councillor of the area. And I said, hello, my name is Michael Jans. I'm the president of Lister Hall. I represent 1,800 of your students who live here, but we're your residents. That city councillor never wrote me back. I didn't get a response and I still like not sound bitter, but like I made a promise to myself, I would never do that. I would meet with any student who reached out to me. I would, I would try and, and find a way to support them because it's like, are you kidding? We're 1,800 and, but it's this, it's this old adage of like, well, students don't vote, renters don't vote. So we got to prove them wrong. We got to show that we're not just high potential voters, but we're going to show up and we're going to vote for policies that give us better transit, give us better housing, give, give us better leisure and recreation. Like if students flex at the ballot box even a little bit, there's 30, 35,000 undergrads at the U of A. Even if you get 10% of them out to vote, that's enough to swing an election. You know what I mean? Like only 105,000 people voted for the last mayor. You could swing an election.
How many?
Hundred and five, hundred and 5,000. There's 110,000 students in Edmonton. Even if you get, even if you get 10% of them out to vote, talk about better transit, talk about more housing. That's a huge, huge power block. It's a huge opportunity. It's a huge way to, to, to just make sure that everyone's voice is heard because students aren't right now. Young people aren't. There, it's often the number one voter is a, is the old, the old homeowner, right? That they're, they're the ones who are almost always guaranteed to vote, but renters and students and, and it, they don't vote. And, and, and so you see policies, you see decisions being made to widen the highway rather than invest in bus service. You see decisions to build more suburbs instead of allowing more housing by campus. You know, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Like I was actually at the NDP Town Hall with Kyle Kososki.
Yeah.
And it was crazy. The demographic that was there, there's like three young people. And most, there was like 10, a handful of people in their 30s, 40s. Majority of people there were retired. And I forget who was speaking, was it, I think it was Kyle, but we were asked to rank kind of the, the topics of the worries. And it was included with education, pension, there was healthcare there, there was housing, something like that. And with the majority of people, the number one thing is pension, right? And it was, it was got me thinking like, huh, is this really something that I've, I didn't rank that at all. That was my lowest one. But it was because the people there were retired and they were just worried about their pension. But had you have, had students in the same kind of, in space, then the polls would be different. It'd probably be more about the economy or education.
Hundred percent.
Right? And it really depends on who you're talking to and how can we all succeed? And I feel like students don't exercise their power to vote up until it's too late. And they're in like a, a place where they're complaining about it, right? And it's just like, oh, what, where, where, what could I have done? I couldn't have done anything. Like, no, you could have done something. Like all you need to do was show up and vote and read up, give an hour of your time, you know, in a week and just know about what's going on in the city.
Can I flip the script to you a bit?
Sure.
Okay. What do you want Edmonton to look like 20 years from now?
What I want, yes, I want the, the parks to still be there. I want more parks, actually. Affordable housing for people, less homeless people. I want better community, more festivals. Yeah. I, I always show up to the fiestas and that's something that I never did in Sherwood Park. Just actually this year is when I started doing the candid interviews of just like, hey, how is, whether it be about mental health, whether it be about culture, whether it be about a discipline or like religion, right? That's something that I've been exploring and what I found is, is just so, so beautiful, the, the, more of these festivals. And I feel like if more people showed up, I, it would make them want to stay more. Cause I often hear of students, of people my age go, what's there to do in Edmonton? There's so much to do in Edmonton. Like if you, if you go on Chat GPT and you just put in a prompt of what's there to do at Edmonton? What are some big events? You'll get a whole list. Every single weekend, there's always something to do. Like right now we got Oktoberfest, right? And then, then we got Deadminton for Halloween. And then probably we had the, last week, there is the Filipino festival. There's an Asia festival. There is a Heritage Culture Festival. There was a, the Taste of Edmonton, right? So I want more of that and I want more people to be aware of that, to actually show up. Because it can get, the Asia Festival last weekend, it went crazy. Like there's so, they didn't expect that many people to show up. So a lot of people were unhappy because the space that they had it in was just.
Victims of their own success. Yeah.
Yeah. It was too compact. And so every time I talk to someone who went there, they're like, they were really unhappy with how it went down. So I want more of that, except in better spaces, right?
Yeah.
But yeah, to answer your, your question, to summarize everything, I want more community. That's it, right? And I want people to be happier. So.
To, and everything you listed from, from the housing to the transportation, to the festivals, all comes from the city taxpayer, all comes from City Hall. So we fund the Edmonton Arts Council over 30 million and that money gets distributed out to all those festivals and those groups. We have grants, we provide space, we provide amphitheaters, we provide parks and everything that, that then enables the community. Edmonton is an incredible city for like, if you have an idea, you can turn it into action. From an anime film fest to a sewing club, to a choir, to whatever it is, video game festival, anything you can possibly imagine. Edmonton's a great place to make things happen.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time, Michael. I really, really.
I'll see you in Rundle.
I'll see you in Rundle. I really look forward to what you're going to accomplish and how you're helping all these people. And you really know how to talk to your audience, man.
Thank you.
Yeah, really. And after just decades of just trying to make the Edmonton better, you've definitely netted positive. And I can see just how many people's lives, they may not know it, like you, you've changed a lot of lives here, man. And can you continue to do so? So keep doing what you're doing and yeah, thank you so much. And then do you have any last words for the Edmontonians watching or?
Wherever you are in Edmonton, wherever you are in the region, October 20th is the next municipal election in Alberta. Get out and vote, vote early, vote often, learn about the candidates, reach out to them. But remember, election day is only one day of the year. It's one day over four years. So get involved in your community for the other 364 days, the other four years. You, election day is just one opportunity. Everything else you do in building advocacy and building community and reaching out and talking to one another's, that's what builds community and that's what politicians will always follow the parade. You have to make the parade that we will then run in front of and help.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time today, Michael.
Thank you.
And as always, to everyone listening and watching, there is a place for you in this chaotic world. Never lose hope, strengthen your faith and keep it long-term. Michael Jans, everyone. Peace.
That was brilliant.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, no.
I, okay, for.